Okay, are we recording?
Yes, sir, we are.
All right, I'm gonna call to order the Board of Directors study session meeting for Thursday, January 12th, 2023. And just a reminder that the regular meeting will be taking place on Tuesday due to the holiday. So don't show up here on Monday. Could have a roll call, please.
Director Meyer Hoffen.
Here.
Director Duff.
Present.
Director Griffith.
Present.
Vice President Sewell.
Here.
President Martin.
Present.
Thank you, we have quorum.
Counselor, you want to go over rules of procedure?
Yes, according to the rules of procedure adopted by the Board of Directors, all notice meetings are conducted using Rosenberg's Rules of Order as a procedural guideline. Directors should refrain from responding directly to public comments at meetings of the board. The president of the board decides all at all meetings, presides at all meetings and decides all points of order and procedure during meetings. The president is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all board meetings. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the president. No member of the board should speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member of the board wishing to speak on the subject shall have been given an opportunity to speak. No board member shall interfere with the orderly progress of a board meeting. The board president regulates the amount of time to be dedicated to a particular agenda item. And that's just some of the more salient points from the rules of procedure. They're available, the the board clerk has them.
Okay, thank you, counselor. Item five, public input, this is the opportunity for members of the public to address the board on matters within the board's jurisdiction. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. State law prohibits the board from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the agenda. Nor do we have any members of the public that wish to address the board.
President Martin, we do not.
Okay. Moving on to item six. Uh, that's the calendar drawing contest presentation that will be taking place on Tuesday. Looking forward to that. That was my college major was art, so I appreciate the work that they've done. Item seven, human resources report.
We will also do that on Tuesday.
Okay.
I see we do have a five year, Lorenzo.
Very cool.
Can't believe Arturo's been here 11 years, wow.
Yeah, time flies, I didn't think so. Um, item eight, resolution twenty twenty-three dash one, this is a routine matter that we address every board meeting. And it's a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Mission Springs Water District proclaiming a local emergency persists. Reratifying the proclamation of a state of emergency by executive order and as a Nora dash zero nine dash twenty-one. And reauthorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the Mission Springs Water District for the period January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three through February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three pursuant to provisions of the Ralph M. Brown Act. As I said, that's a pretty routine matter. Is there any members of board want to ask any questions pursuant to the to that item?
And Mr. President, this will probably be the last resolution of this nature because.
My fingers crossed.
Okay.
Okay. Um, item nine, appointments uh to board standing committees. Over the weekend, I spent actually more time than I should have because I understand that from what I know of the individuals here. Some of you wanted certain things and some of you uh have talent towards uh certain positions on there. I want you to review list that we have in front. If you would like to make a change in either of those three categories. You know, shoot me a email or bring it up on Tuesday. And if it doesn't interfere with the other person who is the alternate. And you can reach an agreement with them, then I can make the change, otherwise it stands. Anybody have any questions concerning this uh list that I have presented? Okay, think about it over the weekend if you have any questions or comments. The next item is the affiliation listing and that is that is a group of agencies that and companies that.
Have you called the bank that?
Hello? Okay, this is a a group of companies, et cetera. And conferences and things like that that we attend. If you feel that there's something on there that we should add to this list, feel free to bring it up. Take a look at it over the, like I said, over the weekend. Um, if you think one shouldn't be on this list, we can also remove it if the board votes to remove it. So um, like I said, take a look over this, does anybody have any burning questions that need to be addressed now? Anybody on the board, Ted? No? Okay.
Just to clarify, we will just present one that we may think is missing and should be added and.
Yeah, you can do that.
A big deal.
Absolutely.
Okay. Absolutely. Thank you.
Anything? Okay, okay. Item eleven, federal advocacy services, Capri and Clay Incorporated. It is recommended to authorize general manager to execute an agreement for the services of Capri and Clay Government Relations in the amount of $4,000 a month for the term February first through January twenty-third to January thirty-first uh twenty-twenty-four, Arden, you wanna?
Well, I'm, and I will introduce our uh, the person that's been with us for for a long time. She was with Thane before.
Right.
Uh, he retired. And I see Laura right there, Lauren Morgan, Morgan Kessler. Um, welcome, how's the weather and how's the weather in DC versus here?
Um, well, we have less rain than you all do out in California, that's for sure.
Yeah, but we need it more than you do, so.
That's true.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Is there anything you would uh care to uh tell the tell the board at this time?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks so much, Arden, for the for the introduction and good afternoon, directors. It's it's really an honor to be with you all today. As Arden said, my name is Laura Morgan Kessler. Uh, I'm a partner here with Carpe and Clay and we have the distinct privilege of serving as your federal advocates uh back here in Washington DC. So appreciate the chance to chat with you today to tell you a little bit about what we've been up to this past year on your behalf. What's and what's happening in Washington on the horizon. Um, I know that for several of you, this is the first time hearing from me. So I wanted to really briefly start off and just tell you a little bit about myself as a Southern Californian native. Uh, I've really focused my career working on behalf of Californians. I began my time here in DC, uh, serving as a legislative staffer for Senator Diane Feinstein. During my tenure in her office, I worked on a wide range of issues, uh, including water, the environment and natural resources. Uh, since leaving Capitol Hill, I've spent the last seventeen years lobbying on behalf of water districts, cities and counties, uh, many of which are in California. Uh, as Arden indicated, I've worked on behalf of the district uh since two thousand and six. So you can think of me really as your eyes and ears in Washington. During that time, I've helped the district secure more than thirteen million dollars in federal funding from the Army Corps of Engineers, the Environmental Protection Agency and the Bureau of Reclamation. Additionally, I've worked on your behalf to stay on top of congressional legislation and federal agency rules and regulations that could impact both your operations and your customers. So despite continuing lingering impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, twenty-twenty-two proved to be a strong year for the district here at the federal level. Um, for the second consecutive year, uh, we were successful in receiving federal funds through community project requests, uh, formerly known as earmarks for the groundwater protection program. So both Senators Feinstein and Padilla helped us to secure eight hundred thousand dollars for this project. So this funding combined with the funding we secured uh in fiscal year twenty-twenty-two brings the total of funding for the past two years for the district to over a million dollars. So this is uh really exciting news for the district, uh, given the significant number of requests that these senators receive for uh projects at the Army Corps. Uh, it's great to know that our requests continue to rise to the top of the pile in both of their offices and really not only speaks highly to the merits of the project, um, but also just the continual communication we've had with their staff in keeping them up to date on the project and its impacts to the community. Um, in addition to seeking federal funds over the past year, there were several legislative and regulatory items that I was monitoring and engaging in on behalf of the district. Um, a few of these include legislation to direct the IRS to make water efficiency rebates for activities such as turf removal to be tax exempt. Uh, implementation of the bipartisan infrastructure law and uh monitoring several potential rules coming out of the Environmental Protection Agency, uh, including potentially with PFAS and re-just redefining the term waters of the US. So as you're likely aware, last week, the one hundred and eighteenth Congress officially began with the House of Representatives switching to Republican control in the new Congress. We saw the House elect a new speaker, California's own Congressman Kevin McCarthy. He's one of two California members on House leadership teams with Congressman Pete Aguilar serving on the Democratic side. The House and Senate are now going through the process where they organize themselves for the new Congress, which includes determining committee chairs and ranking members as well as committee memberships. Uh, it's anticipated that they'll finish up these activities by the end of January and roll up their sleeves and get to work. So along with the new Congress, we're also seeing some exciting changes to the buildings themselves. Prior to COVID-19, House and Senate office buildings were open to the public and anyone could attend unescorted with or without a meeting. That all changed uh in March of twenty-twenty and for uh really two years after that, buildings were only open to members and staff. Uh, we saw some slight tweaks in twenty-twenty-two where a handful of offices started to do in-person meetings. But you had to be escorted by staff from the moment you entered the building until the moment that you exited. Uh, so I'm pleased to share that as of last week, all of the escorting requirements for the buildings have been lifted. And so they are once again open. Um, this is a great way to start the new year and it means that when the district comes back to DC for your advocacy trip, either as a part of the Aqua DC Conference or on a separate date, that I'll be able to take you back into the buildings and meet with your delegation in person. So we're we're really excited about that. Um, quickly, looking ahead to the next few months in Washington, really anticipating a winter and spring full of activity, as is commonly the case. Uh, the president is respected, is expected to release his annual budget proposal, which is really the action that kickstarts the appropriations process. And that's where we would have an opportunity to potentially request another community uh project funding. Um, additionally, with the new house, with the new majority in the House, I'm expecting to see an increase in congressional committee activity, particularly related to oversight of various federal agencies. Um, also, the drought continues to be front and center back here in Washington. Um, and there's been a lot of attention, obviously, with both the Bureau of Reclamation and the Department of Interior regarding what actions they've taken to alleviate these impacts. Also, now that the president is in the second half of his first term, federal agencies are gonna look to move rules through their process and get them out to the public uh more quickly. So expect to see that activity continue over the next twelve to eighteen months. Um, so as you can see, quite a bit coming in the next few ones, which will provide several opportunities uh for the district to continue to engage with federal decision makers as well as your delegation on Capitol Hill. Um, I want to make sure I leave time to answer any of your questions. So with that, as always, I just want to indicate how much I appreciate working on your behalf and I look forward to answering your questions.
I, before you do that, I would like to add an interesting story that I think uh explains a little bit of the 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 effectiveness of the of having the lobbying here is that we did, as Laura shows here, we got a thirty-five million dollar authorization. We were happy, that's how we put many of these projects through and appropriated. But we also went out one year where they were going to deauthorize us. And Laura helped us uh support of, and we proposed amendment. Laura was there, we wrote it and it went through. And it stopped the deauthorization of our thirty-five million dollars. So you just have to keep your eyes and ears on these people out there. Um, we we made a very effective case that we have moved forward with this project and we shouldn't be included with those that just throw their name in the hat and then sit back and do nothing.
Not only the value of our of our lobbyists, but the value of going back to Washington and and participating in the process, so yeah.
I'm I'm sorry, I just thought the the, it's kind of a strange story. But you think, you know, well, we're always just doing this, but you have to always keep your eyes and ears open.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
That's all.
Any questions from the board?
Robert?
I do. Hi, uh, nice to meet you, my name's Robert Griffith, I am one of the directors here. Just uh, it's just informational stuff. So in terms of when you have a delegation go out, um, I know that there is the Aqua Conference and there is a bunch of activity around that. Um, is it? Is it more beneficial to do that at that time or is it beneficial to do it separately? Um, and I, you know, full disclosure, I actually lobbied uh in Congress nineteen ninety-three on my own. And um, there is a benefit to being recognized uh on a more individual basis because then there's a name with everything. And so I was just kind of curious as to what your thought would was most beneficial for us.
Sure, absolutely, Director Griffith. Um, and you know, I I think you're absolutely right. Um, you know, in the years past, we, for on behalf of the district, we did these trips together. Um, you know, you all, we had a a delegation come back from Aqua and then what we would do is a day before the conference started, we would hold um all of the meetings with the delegation and the core. Um, and and that really did prove to be effective. Um, but I will say that in in my experience, I think what you're saying is definitely correct, that oftentimes when you do come back and do your meetings during a larger conference, so Aqua, when cities come back during National League of Cities, sometimes it can be hard to get as much sort of time and attention from the staff because they are cycling through a lot of meetings. Um, so I I think in a in a perfect universe, doing a separate trip uh where there's not a lot of other competing interests for the people you're trying to meet uh is always effective, but as is often the case with public entities, you know, we know sometimes that that can be difficult, either from a scheduling standpoint with board meetings or resources. So, you know, have always really found a way to still make those trips effective if they need to combine with a bigger conference like Aqua.
Okay, thank you, and and just one more question, which is kind of relevant. Um, so you you're you you don't represent anybody, any of the other agencies here in the valley, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Meyerhoffen. I haven't asked him yet, so I'm going to you. Go ahead, you have any questions?
Yes, I do. See, your, the contract here is for forty-eight thousand. Oh, yeah, there we go, thank you, bud. So the, Ted Meyerhoffen, I'm sorry, the contract here is for forty-eight thousand. Be paid four thousand a month. So that means for some unknown reason, we decide not to use you anymore. We still owe you that remainder of the forty-eight thousand, correct?
So the, uh, sorry, was that a question to me or was that internal? Apologize.
I believe the question was addressed to you.
Okay. Uh, sure, so typically the way that that the contract has worked in the past um is it, it does work on a retainer from a month-to-month basis and there are obviously some months, for example, um, when we're preparing community project requests, when you all come back, when we're, you know, working to make sure those get included in the process, that there is a a larger volume of activity. So you know, there is ups and flows, absolutely. Um, I don't think in in all my time working on your behalf, um, that we've had, you know, real periods of of a month or even more where there has not been activity. Um, but as I think is is the case with with the contract, I do believe there is um, you know, an opportunity if if you all felt like you were not getting the value for which you were paying for to have that discussion.
Good, thank you. And then my next question is, uh, number G here, it says obligation of the district under paragraph two, sub-paragraph F, G and H is not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars for the period covered in this contract. What is that twenty-five hundred for?
Yeah, so that is to cover any sort of long-distance expenses. So for example, if um you all were gonna have uh an important meeting with, say, the LA District Office and you wanted me, you know, you requested that I fly out to the district to attend that meeting. Um, that that covers, you know, for you all the cost of those expenses. But when you all are back here or any of the things that I'm doing on a day-to-day basis, whether it's, you know, taking an Uber up to the hill, those things are all not expense to the district.
Okay, thank you. Good, anything further, Ted? Okay.
And no questions, just, uh, hi Laura, good to see you and I appreciate all that you do for our district, thank you.
Thank you.
One one last comment I I have on on the uh meetings workshops that we discussed earlier. One of the meetings, of course, is a legislative representing travel meetings in Washington and in California. And it lists the primary is uh Sewell and the alternate is Griffith. Actually, that's not really accurate because you both go, there isn't an alternate. You both go back there, it's usually uh the president and either the vice president or one of the other board members and Arden. Um, and uh, that's usually the group, but both of you would would attend that, so. Arden, anything? Ryan, did you want to add anything?
I was just going to add, Director Meyerhoffen asked a question about a termination, there is a termination clause A. Within thirty days of written notice, they can terminate, we can terminate, so we would not have to pay them the additional funds.
Okay, I was just, th- thank you for clarifying that, I I don't think will ever be a reason, I hope there is never one, thank you.
No.
Okay, moving on to item twelve, mid-year operating budget report and fiscal year twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-three capital budget and continuing appropriations. We just got through with a uh workshop addressing most, if not all, of the budget issues and appropriations and and things of that nature. Um, is there anything you want to add to what was uh said during the workshops?
Well, I I do believe, I know you might be tired, but Arturo does have a short presentation for you, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, thank you, General Manager Wallam and uh distinguished members of the board. Uh, Vice President Sewell and President Martin. Um, I am uh gonna go over quickly, um, a summary of the information that we did go over on Tuesday's workshop, uh, just as a reminder of what you're looking at in terms of uh your approval for the we're requesting today. Um, and just a reminder of the assumptions that we had into the budget uh when we first started in June, uh, we did include an eight percent revenue increase. Uh, we went over the reasons for that, new connections in water, uh, and wastewater uh connections. Uh, the grants and the loans, uh, that we're requesting, uh, a class and comp uh plan that was put into place with one additional position for the district. Uh, a reminder that we are the fastest-growing community in the Coachella Valley. Um, and that's important to remember when we're looking at some of these items because uh we have uh, the valley's growing and it's growing on our way. Um, it's not growing inward in India, it's not growing as fast as it is in in Desert Hot Springs. Uh, and that's something to remember. Uh, we also were effective throughout the pandemic in making sure that our customers uh received the uh benefit that they do expect from the district. Um, and uh soon as the moratorium ended on the shot-offs, everything started to pick up again, uh, including the inflation on all the costs associated uh with the district. Uh, the managers and staff uh did try to be proactive in keeping a lot of those costs down. Um, we were not successful in some of those, but we did uh come up with the additional funds to try to cover those expenses. Uh, so the net uh request uh from the employees, uh, primarily the managers, came out to two hundred and five thousand. Uh, that is offset by the solar credits that we are receiving of two hundred and twenty-five thousand and the additional grant funds uh that uh we're putting into place due to the uh regional facility that is being constructed right now, seventeen point eight million dollars. Uh, a reminder as to where we are in terms of the actual uh budget again is just a wish list of the expenses and revenues that we think are coming in. The actual to-date, uh, that is uh net operating income and that's what we control as a district is up three point six million dollars um compared uh from the beginning of the year, sorry. Um, in addition to net non-operating income, uh, up one point seven million. And these are the ones that we do basically can't control, whether it's uh additional connections to the district uh to all the construction that is happening uh around us and therefore increases those fees associated with those new connections to the the system. Uh, quickly, just a summary of the uh line items that were increased as part of the mid-year budget. Uh, legal was increased, uh, one hundred and forty-five thousand or requested to be increased. Electric utility, one hundred and ninety thousand wastewater treatment, outside services. Those were the TDS um studies that are required uh in the sludge removal disposal. Uh, additionally, the capitalized uh costs associated with some of these projects that do have to be put aside uh in not expensed as uh required by accounting practices. Uh, moving on to the uh revenue-specific items, uh, delinquent charges did in, uh, we are requesting an increase of one hundred and fifty thousand uh residential sewer service charges, those are the new connections that have come in since the beginning of the year, requiring us to request those increases of two hundred and fifty thousand, the solar credits that we went over and the grants of seventeen million for a total of eighteen point four million dollars in revenues, true revenues. Um, finally, I want to remind the the board of the reserve policy in place uh that requires us to maintain cash set aside of thirty-seven point uh thirty-seven million dollars as part of the uh reserve uh program, uh, and this is in case we have any emergencies, any replacements have to be done of the system. Um, and also our current cash balances of uh that monies that have been set aside is those uh investments that we have with Cal Trust of thirty million dollars. We still have a shortage of seven million dollars in those funds, um, the, based on your policy. Um, and also want to remind the the uh the board uh that we were thinking about that that debt service way before we started this budget. Um, most of the debt service ratios that I see out there require the district to maintain one point two five uh ratio. Currently, we have a ratio of eight point two four, which means we, that's the uh annual debt that we would have to pay. Uh, we are currently eight point two four ahead of that, if we had to make those debt payments, uh, we don't. Um, but that is where we stand. Um, and again, financing was always part of the long-range plan um and as as well as the effective planning and uh leadership. And I'll answer any specific questions that uh any of you may have, thank you.
Okay, moving over here to my left, Amber, do you have any questions? I'm shocked. Robert, do you have any questions? Ted?
Last last meeting, Arturo, you you put up on the board there that we had twenty thousand dollars, I'm sorry, twenty million dollars. And we wanted to leave that there, where where does that twenty mean as part of this thirty?
Uh, it's, it was thirty million, that was in the number.
Thirty, okay.
Yeah.
All right, and and we have to leave that there by law to for operating.
Not by law, that is, that is a policy of the board. Um, and uh, as it stands, that is the um, what we what the board suggests we set aside in order to come up with an emergency uh reserve. Uh, in case we have to replace something immediately, we do have those funds available. And that has been traditionally underfunded uh over the last two, three years is the first time we've come as the as close as we have. Uh, but we are still under uh the policy of the board.
It may take some time to get to get to the thirty-seven, but the the board's direction and the community's direction was to maintain that reserve.
Still, it's interesting, it's a lot healthier than when I first got on the board in terms of, yeah, I remember, yeah. Anything further, Ted?
What would, I'm always on the subject, what would be the uh?
What would, I'm always on the subject, what would be the give me a, for instance, of where you would need thirty million dollars, it wouldn't be all at one time.
An earthquake, for example, is a, a good example of when we have a potential catastrophe that the district needs those funds. That is the estimated value of replacing some of those pipes and some of those wells to make sure that our customers get the continued service that they expect from the district that they've been paying into, yeah.
I've been waiting for California to fall in the ocean since, since seventh grade, so maybe it's going to be around the corner, I don't, I guess it's a good idea, maybe. Thank you. Ivan?
Nothing further on the budget. I was just wondering, do we know when that capital replacement reserve target policy was established?
Nineteen ninety-five is when we had the first one establishing the wastewater reserve. Then in nineteen ninety-six, both the water and the general fund. We are going to be reviewing this and bringing to the board a suggestion on how to make changes to this policy. Simply because, just to make sure that it meets standards, you know, with other water districts and what is happening with the state. It was very loosely put together, it made sense back then. What we do is we take one-half of the annual depreciation of the assets, and that's what's being set aside, and it keeps adding up every year. And it's not a true picture of what a replacement reserve should look like. But we'll bring back more details for the board that actually makes sense and give you the option to keep it as is or to make any changes as needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything further you want to add, Arden? Brian, anything you want to add? Okay. Moving on to item thirteen, resolution twenty-twenty-three dash zero-two, Mission Springs Water District Regional Water Reclamation Facility installment purchase agreement. Pardon?
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm gonna let Arturo introduce our, pardon me. Oh, okay, excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm gonna let Arturo introduce our distinguished present, presenters and guests today. And we'll go over the detail of, of how this will work. Okay, Arturo?
Thank you, General Manager Wollam, and again, distinguished members of the board. I did start this conversation back in July with several banks and state agencies that do provide either lines of credits or types of loans to special districts. One of that, one of them was MuniCode or MuniFinance, which works very closely with CSDA, as you're well aware of. We received four proposals, and of the four, the one that made more sense to the district was the one presented by Wells Fargo. It was a less restrictive of the four. Other banks or agencies, for example, required that the district completely change banks in order to, to be able to qualify for that loan. That just simply made no sense to us in terms of all the services in the partnership we have been building with Wells Fargo. And as you have seen over the last three years, all the improvements we have made, not only in the way we process accounts payables, also all the check writings and the improvements that we have in terms of the fraud. We've been able to capture pretty much a hundred percent of any issues that have gone through Wells Fargo compared to what we had with the previous bank. So, and again, and they offered overall the best rate as well for the district. And so I'm gonna have Jamie O'Connell with Wells Fargo give a brief presentation of the current terms of the loan, so that you get an idea of what it looks like for the district. And I'll present it out to Jamie.
Thank you, Arturo, and it's been a pleasure working with you too. You've been instrumental in all of the changes that the district is trying to make. So I just want to make sure I let the board know that. Thank you for the opportunity, council members. I am Jamie O'Connell, I'm the Relationship Manager for Wells Fargo Bank's Local Government Banking Group. And I've managed the district account relationship for the last three to four years prior to the pandemic, of course. And we were presented the opportunity to look at some financing options for the district. And I'm going to try to share my screen and go over the information. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes, yeah, yes.
Awesome. Really briefly, this is your Wells Fargo team. So, again, I'm Jamie O'Connell, the Relationship Manager. This has been a big project that we've been reviewing over the last few months. On the line with me today is my credit partner, John Self, who will get into more of the details regarding the opportunity that we've been presented with. And I will go ahead and kick this over to John. So, John, really briefly, you had you, you, you issued the RFP looking for some financing opportunities. So I took it back to my credit team, and it's a team of us. We all put our heads together to come up with the best opportunity. And so, John, I wanted to introduce John Self. He is my partner for public finance. And he's going to discuss the offer today.
And before I get going, I just wanted to see if there's any questions. This is John Self with the Public Finance with Wells Fargo. And more than happy, Arturo, if you like, I can just jump right into the presentation. Would that be the best way to?
Sure.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much. Well, what, first and foremost, we put together a transaction through Jamie. And what ends up happening is it's a fifteen-million-dollar tax exam structure where you're going to be able to take this all at one time through one installment, a dispersment directly deposited with the district. And the transaction will be due in two years with interest only between associated with the transaction. So what ends up happening is you can take that fifteen million dollars and utilize it to facilitate and assist with the improvements that are being made, made within the system itself. Right now, the interest rate and the term sheet, Arturo, that you had from last week is four-eleven. The transaction, as we see it today, because the interest rates have improved, have actually dropped by twelve basis points. We wanted to give the district and yourself some good news, so it's down to a three-ninety-nine today. The rate is as of today, good through the seventeenth. And we are prepared, I know that you have Cyrus on the phone, who's your bond counsel, to facilitate and assist with the documentation necessary to facilitate the transaction itself. What's interesting about the structure is that the rate that you're receiving is lower than the reinvestment rate associated with these proceeds. So we're seeing this as an opportunity for the district through very conservative investments, pure money markets, to be able to facilitate and actually be able to obtain some additional funds in the process. And it, and so if you want to the second page here, next page, Jamie, okay? And so we looked at this, and one of the things is, poor Arturo has been putting up with us now for seven months as we've gone back and forth, and the market has changed dramatically. Historically, we would have, over the last seven, eight years, put this together as a drawdown structure whereby as you needed funds, you would request the funds from Jamie, Jamie then would disperse it to your account. And you draw those funds down to minimize the interest impact on the district as you go forward. What's interesting today, interest rates have gone back to more pre-two-thousand-eight levels. So what ends up happening is there's an opportunity to actually net out or at least make a few bucks in the process whereby the district would be in a positive situation on those draws. So we're recommending that it become fully funded associated with the transaction and be available over two years. We also analyze the variable versus fixed. In the short-term rates are actually higher today significantly, and especially with the fact that they're looking at least at one or two more increases over the next couple of month, actually, over the next three to four months. So what we're looking at is the ability to lock in that rate and avoid those increases over time. So those are kind of the, the benefits. You'll see down below that that was the initial rate underneath the, the term sheet that Jamie had delivered last week of four-eleven. We've updated it to three-ninety-nine. And you're seeing that today's market rates, money market rates, are running right in that four-fifteen to four-thirty rate, which is very beneficial. And so what we've also been able to do, and through Arturo's work with Cyrus and the whole district, is really put this in position so that you can prior to the thirtieth, which is the next Fed meeting, which is when we're anticipating at least a twenty-five, if not a fifty, more likely a twenty-five basis point increase at the next meeting in the process. One more page there, Jamie, when you get a chance.
This one.
Yep, that just gives you an overview of the money market rates that we've been looking at in the process to give you some ideas with regards to where those rates would be. And the next page would be terrific.
So, yeah. Yeah, I'm, let me, I was just gonna, let me go back one more page. So, um, one thing that, you know, with the rising rate environment, and you know, I've spoken to Arturo and we had elected to offer the district the money market sweep option. And what that does is, I, I highlighted here in yellow, the fund option that the district is having today. So the current, the current seven date is four-point-oh-seven, this is as of January tenth. And the next slide just shows you, since inception of this, the district has received in November fifteen-thousand-eight-twenty-nine-fifty-seven, and in December, fifteen-thousand-one-eleven-twenty-eight. And this is just for the balances that you have been maintaining in the checking account here at Wells Fargo. Arturo asked me to explain how the sweep works, and so I wanted to just let you know the district, on a daily average, fluctuates about seven to ten million in collected balances. Of that, we, you know, based on the one-point-six-five earnings credit rate that is offered on the checking account, that rate is offered to offset fees based on the balances kept in the checking account. So we did a calculation, and about three-point-five million would be a good base to keep in the checking account to offset the banking fees. Every dollar above that gets put into one of the investment sweep options. And so, based on that, you're, this was the return that you received for the last two months. And the rate continues to rise. So the more you keep in the checking account that's above this three-point-five million, this is just dividends paid to the account monthly.
So I think this is two different components, right, Jamie, associated with the, the credit facility. Where Arturo is able to manage the construction budget through the lend, through the two-year note that has been put in place. And this is the additional interest that the district will be earning on an ongoing basis. And you're just showing an interpretive amount from last November, December, in the anticipation that they will continue to receive six, similar types of returns as you go forward.
Exactly.
So, Arturo, would you like us to also take a moment and walk through the term sheet, or would you, how you'd like to?
No, that, that is fine. The district, the board did receive that copy. So at this time, if, if any of the board members have any questions for the Wells Fargo team, they can answer them. On the call is also Cyrus Tarabi with Straddling, who helped me tremendously through the agreement that is also on the agenda, to be able to come up with the terms he negotiated for the district. Some of the terms with Wells Fargo and their team. So I also want to say thank you to him. So unless there's no questions, I'll give it, I'll give Cyrus a couple of minutes to also share what he went through to help us put this together as well.
Okay, first, let's address any questions that the board has. Amber, do you have any questions or comments?
Not, not for the Wells Fargo team, but Arturo.
It's just a comment, I, when I see the rate, it's, it's pretty good. I also know when we talk about this, we're talking time is of the essence, because the Fed does meet on January thirty-first, which is right around the corner, and what I know so far is the expectation is that they will raise the rate again either twenty-five basis points now and possibly twenty-five in March, or possibly fifty this month and nothing in March or even more. So at that point, then, this three-point-nine-nine would probably not be available. Is that correct?
No, so what we're looking to do with the recommendation tonight from the board, we're willing to hold this rate to closing. With a, with an effective date, we're on the January seventeenth meeting date that you would look to approve the facility. So the way Cyrus has written the resolutions, I don't mean to instill your thunder here by any means, okay? Is, but what we've done is we've worked internally, and Jamie's done a terrific job, so that you don't have to take any interest rate risk on an ongoing basis on this transaction after tonight.
Now, that I understand, I just mean in terms of if, if this does not get enacted.
Go in, yes.
Now, we're talking about higher rates in the future, correct?
But, yes, you are. Yes, no, that's a very good assumption.
Okay, one brief comment. This is a study session, and generally, we don't make decisions now. It's usually on the, on the following regular board meeting. That would be acceptable to wait until then. You said now, so I just want to make sure that we don't have to take action today, because we generally don't do that during a study session.
Right, we're looking at action being taken on January seventeenth, official action, okay?
Okay, okay. Ted? Yes, sir. My, my experience with banks is you, you want to know how we're gonna pay it back. Explain to me what the district has told you, you know, how we're gonna pay this back.
That's a good question on that side. So what we've done is taken a pledge via Cyrus, looking at the facility and all, through the grants and the, and the sewer fund associated with the transaction.
She's taken a pledge.
Revenue that's to be received from the state. And then that's backed up by the sewer funds as well. Very good question.
By the sewer plant as well as the connections that will come to the sewer plant? Because building the sewer plant doesn't bring us any money until we connect.
Yeah, I, I can try to answer. Hi, folks, Cyrus Tarabi with Straddling Yaca. My partner, Brad Neal, and myself have been bond counsel to the district for, for quite a while. So the security is not in any physical assets. The security is a pledge of net revenues of the sewer system. And then, as John mentioned, the grant funds that are expected to come in from the state Water Resources Control Board grant. So there's no mortgage or anything like that on any district facilities. That's not permissible under California law. We are giving Wells Fargo essentially by the words of the document a pledge of the net sewer system revenues. And so that's where the promise to repay is housed and kind of what it consists of.
And also too, I know that Arturo, you know, will have to submit for reimbursements, and so there's going to be some time before that happens. And so that's why this would, you know, be beneficial to keep everything moving along while you're waiting to get repaid from that fund.
And if we don't, then, no, that's okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I don't have any further questions. Ivan?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, I have nothing further. Anything further from you, General Manager Wollam?
No, not right now. I think that, that explains it, but, but I, I do believe this is, you know, after looking at this, and maybe Arturo is gonna get into this. We looked at different ways in which we could move forward, and regardless of what happens, even if we were going to, to do it, to go with a loan, we would need this cash flow temporary loan in order to bring us up. It, it still is the most efficient way to do it, costly to the district.
It would be different if, you know, the Horton Plant had lots of, of ability to, to absorb that, and we didn't have to. And we said, well, we, we should build a new plant, because at some point, we're gonna be at maximum capacity. We're there now.
We need to build that.
Need it now.
Year ago.
Yeah.
And, and if we don't.
And we did not wait until the last minute, because we've been working on this for years.
Yes. Yes, I think it is important to understand that we cannot stall on this project anymore.
Okay, good. Anything further from you, Arturo?
No, unless Cyrus has anything else that he would like to share. Otherwise, that is the presentation.
Yeah, thanks, Arturo. No, nothing further, you know, certainly available for questions between now and the seventeenth as well, but appreciate everyone's time and you know, I think, as John mentioned, assuming approval on the seventeenth, we will quickly move to close the transaction. We, we do need a couple of days to get all the documents signed and delivered and so on, but the, the intention is certainly to close before the end of January, before that next Federal Reserve Board meeting.
Exactly.
Thank you, everyone. And just as a reminder of the board, Cyrus did Thank you, uh, everyone, and uh, just as a reminder of the board, uh, Cyrus did uh, make sure that. Everything that is part of the law in terms of getting these types of loans was in the agreement and. To make sure the district, you know, uh, someone who uh, may not be as completely experienced with some of these transactions. Uh, guided the, the district in making the best decision uh, for us, so I want to appreciate the, the team that put this together, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything further from you, Jamie?
No, that's all I had, thank you so much.
Yes, Amber?
I do have one question for Arturo, I'm sorry. At the workshop you presented to us that the fees that were necessary to acquire the new loan that would be due upon signing. Was approximately a hundred and eighty four thousand, but here I'm seeing in the paperwork for the agenda sixty. Can you please clarify which is which or are they both?
No, uh, the a hundred and eighty four was an estimate and that was a budget that we put together in June, not knowing where we were going to land. Uh, normally the fees can run out to, uh, you know, uh, that amount. Uh, and obviously it came in less, so you know, great news for the district that it came under budget. Uh, when we expected that to be much higher.
Thank you.
Anything further?
No, just if this does go and they do raise the rates and actually the amount on the sweep will be even higher, so that would be to our benefit.
That is true.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, well, thank you, Arturo, thank you gentlemen, and uh, you, Jamie, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your time tonight.
Sure. Moving on, item fifteen, Critical Services Center and Administering Building update.
Mister Wollam, your mic please.
I believe that I'm gonna reverse those, the regional reclamation facilities, item fourteen, so I'm gonna let Steve give you an update. On the construction of that plant.
Okay, uh, thank you, General Manager Wollam, um, good afternoon. Excuse me, President Martin and members of the board, um, I have a short presentation today followed by a short video. Um, and then I got a little bit of a verbal update too on a few other items that aren't uh, specifically construction related at the treatment plant. So if you bear with me, I will share my screen. Okay, um, so through the month of December, um, the contractor J F Shay continued construction on the north. Sequence batch reactor tank wall reinforcements. Um, as you can see here on the left side and hand side of the screen, it's a large wall mat, uh, rebar mat being flown in to um, assemble for the wall. And on the right hand side of the screen, that's a, a portion of the wall being formed up for concrete to be poured. Um, this is a photo from the northwest corner of the site. Um, and you can see progress along those S B R tanks, they're mostly enclosed at this point. Um, so you'll see kind of a ramp going up in a catwalk. Across the top of the tank so that the construction crews have access throughout the. In addition, um, the contractor began work on the headworks area. Um, you can see on the right hand side of the screen, they're laying conduits and then backfilling them. Um, with a red cement slurry that denotes that it's an electrical conduit bank. Um, so if there's any excavation in the future, anytime you see that um, come up in the ground, you want to be very careful. Um, to understand that there's electrical conduits in that area. Um, the influent pump station foundation um, was being poured, that's roughly a thirty, thirty five foot deep structure. That's where all the um, raw wastewater will come into the plant and be pumped up to be processed through the plant. Um, in addition, the headworks area slab is being poured and the contracting, or excuse me, construction crews are doing the finish work. On the right hand side of your screen. The administration building, um, the, all these slabs are completed and the contractor began putting in all the C M U block walls. Um, that block wall work was actually finished up this week and starting tomorrow. The contractor will begin erecting the actual steel building um, that abuts um, the, this C M U all that you are looking at. Um, in addition, it was, uh, I, I find it a pretty monumentous occasion, um, the first large piece of equipment was delivered to the site and set onsite. In front of you, what you see is the belt filter press, um, this is used in sludge processing to reduce the water content. Um, the, this is a request from operations, was this specific B D P Industries uh, belt filter press unit? It's the same belt filter press used at the Horton plant, um, that allows your operation staff to have ease of spare parts on hand, readily available for. To su- supplement either site, as well as your operators are very familiar with this equipment and it's been, been proven a, a successful. And efficient a piece of equipment at the other plants. Um, in addition, the contractor can, continued work on the affluent pipeline. Um, so this pipeline goes, this takes the treated wastewater from the north end of the site. And does little, delivers it to the south end of the site to be disposed of in spreading ponds. Um, in the top right hand side of the screen, uh, one of the workers is bolting up a butterfly valve to the twenty four inch pipeline. Um, and with that, I will switch to a short video. Um, so this is a time lapse camera that we have positioned in the uh, northwest corner of the site. Um, we're currently looking southeast, um, to the far right hand side of the screen is high ten freeway. Um, and we're looking at primarily the four sequence batch reactor tanks. Um, this video goes roughly uh, from mid-November um, through today. Um, so with that, you'll see a lot of movement with the cranes, you'll see a lot of the walls in the foreground being uh, rebar being completed. Um, you'll see forms start to go up like on the right hand side of the screen and then um, those walls are poured and then those forms. Are stripped after several days of curing. Um, and in the background, you'll see that they're working on the administration building slab, that's roughly a thirteen thousand square foot building. Um, they've completed all these slabs, all the conduits, embedments and reinforcements on that slab. And again, you'll start to see that take shape in the background as we work through to current. Um, again, you, you're seeing the walls kinda come up in the foreground as they're enclosing those tanks and really finishing off that phase of work. And then in the background, you'll see the C M U walls for the administration building. Um, beginning to go up and it went up rather quickly, it's been about two weeks of work on those C M U walls and again, they just finished them up. Um, this week. For the project. Um, with that, I do have a couple of other updates, um, regarding the grants, um, we're still waiting on approval for the final budget approval. Um, with the state, um, so with the grant agreement, the state has authorized that are provided sixty eight million dollar in grant to the district. Uh, for the project, but the second step of that is we need to get that money allocated to start spending. Um, and that's what this final budget approval process is. Um, we submitted that form back in May of this year, um, but the state would not review that until the final agreement was in place. So once that was completed and signed by the state in late September, they began review of the final abrupt budget approval form. Um, that's been in a review since uh, the beginning of October, um, I spoke with the state on, uh, what was it, Tuesday? And they confirmed that they're looking to get that approved um, later this month. Um, and once we have that approved, the district can submit for reimbursement for all costs incurred to date. Um, regarding the conveyance line, so this is the trunk sewer enforcement that will bring flows over to the treatment plant. Um, the contracting with Downing Construction was completed in December. Um, we actually held the pre-construction meeting earlier this morning. Um, the construction management team has been in the process of reviewing and processing material submittals. On discussion with the contractor this morning, um, they expect that uh, it's gonna take about anywhere from four, or six weeks. Maybe eight tops to get all the materials on site to begin construction. Um, so we expect them to be, begin construction on the pipeline portions um, sometime in March. Um, and with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Okay, uh, Amber, you have any questions?
I guess, please. Um, you may mention that the slab was being poured for the administration building, are you referring in fact to the critical response building? Or the administrative building the board has yet to approve?
Uh, my, sorry to confuse that, that is the building that's on the treatment plant site, there is the office and lab for staff. There is an electrical room, a blower room, a maintenance room or, you know, kinda garage. And a de-watering room where that belt filter press is housed, um, so it's completely separate from any other project, it's part of this regional plant for its operation.
Thank you.
Robert?
Uh, just a question regarding the last item, which was the construction, so I know that back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty especially. Um, we had significant supply chain issues with steel products and things like that. Um, I don't know how much that's eased or if they're expecting more because of the COVID in China, but. Uh, cause you said about four, six, eight weeks, are you aware of currently any major supply chain issues with this or? Uh, are they just expecting that in general? I know there's, there's issues with other things, so just kinda curious.
Uh, great question Director Griffith, uh, what we know is that there's no delays with the V C P, the petrified clay piping. For the large gravity sewers, but there are some delays expected with the P V C, um, they've had issues with the resin. Which leads to slowdown and actually um, fabricating the pipe, um, so. The contractor is going to be starting on the gravity sewer portion from Little Morongo from the treatment plant up to Dillon. Um, so they fully expect that as they're getting their orders in and building that gravity sewer that the P V C pipe will come in well in time, well ahead. To be able to construct the force main and Dillon, which is P V C. Um, on the treatment plant side, it's really the, the motor control centers, the large electrical equipment that controls any pumps and motors. Um, that's, that's been the delay we found on other well projects and the treatment plant side, that's uh, that's where the delays have been. Uh, kinda goes in hand in hand with the chip shortage that most are familiar with.
Thank you. Ted?
Yes, sir. How many miles of pipe do we laying in to go from the Horton to the new plant?
Uh, it's about, or, so. There's one mile of gravity sewer from the regional plant up to Dillon Road. And about two miles of force main from Dillon Road and Little Morongo, um, easterly to the existing Dos Palmas lift station. Um, this, there's already pipes connecting up to Horton from that lift station and we're not making that full run, we only have to go to the lift station. That's roughly around Dillon and Abbottina Menzana.
So approximately three miles?
Three miles, correct.
And what's the cost to, to do that?
Um, the construction cost, uh, bear with me, let me pull that up, I did not have that on. Um, the total con, total cost for the bid was six point five million and change.
Six point five millions to go three miles, thank you very much.
Ivan? Yeah, just overall, uh, Steve, is our timeline still on track and do you see anything that could hold us up?
Overall, our timeline's still on track, um, the motor control centers I mentioned, there's a potential for a little bit of delay there. Um, but we haven't heard anything from the vendor that, that is gonna delay the project yet.
Okay.
If that makes sense, so.
This is a question maybe more for staff, were Director Duff and Meyer Hoppin able on their tours to go to the site?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. And um, I was just thinking it'd be good for everyone to see it before that uh, it gets backfilled and a lot of those tanks are gonna be covered. How much is gonna be above grade again?
Um, on, on, on two sides about eight feet and on the other two sides about four feet.
Okay.
Um, so you'll be able to actually look over the tank on, near the building and kinda the north end of the site. Um, but the south end and the, the west end, you, it's about eight feet tall, you have to climb up onto the, to the catwalks to be able to see that.
Okay, thank you.
You, you are right, it, it's really amazing to see what it looks like with all the rebar and all of the work that goes into the structure. It, it's, there's a, the, the sloshing effect in the water, the power of water is, is amazing. And uh, and you know, and now we've got to design these so they can withstand uh, earthquakes. Which means in, you know, even more structural strength with those walls.
I'm used to seeing a construction sites rebar that is about, well, I don't know, about as wide as your pinky finger and stuff. And to look at the rebar they're putting into that plant, it's about, about that big around, so it's really. Uh, it, it looked like a building of.
Six inches apart too.
Yeah, yeah, just amazing, amazing, amazing. Uh, anything further you wanna add, or Brian, do you wanna add anything to that? Okay, moving on to, now we'll get to the Critical Services Center and Administration Building update.
Good afternoon, President Martin, members of the board, uh, we are getting very close to completing our design uh, of the, of the facilities. Uh, we are currently working with our consultants to finalize the bidding documents, California Environmental Quality Act or CECL compliance. Uh, construction management inspection proposals, uh, as well as working with the city and getting their review of how we're connecting to two bunch and things of that nature. Uh, in past meetings, we have mentioned possibly bringing an action item to you in February, we're delaying that. Uh, once the bidding documents are completed, we will then provide the board with an updated and more definitive timeline. Uh, lastly, we continue to work for, with our architect to schedule a tour of the East Valley uh, Water District Building, I think the, the tour of the Palm Springs Unified. Administrative building went very well, I appreciate everybody attending that, uh, once we get confirmation of the potential dates, we'll work with Dory to get those on your calendar.
Okay.
Don't have.
Any questions from the board? Amber? Ted?
Yes, what decisions were, were made? That we discussed at the uh, school? What, 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 what was implemented into the new plan now?
Uh, there were no changes to the plans that they stand now, a lot of the things that we saw were more aesthetics inside, colors. Uh, the dais and stuff like that, that will be handled during the construction process. Right now, the building and everything else and the plans that gets us the building is, is what we're working on right now, so once we get in the internal things, then we'll start. Uh, to, better defining those items.
I, I understand that. When the construction starts, the dais will start being built, but you have to have the plans first, so. Is it gonna be a, a concrete dais or what did, what did we decide on there?
That we have not made a decision because we haven't gone to the East Valley to give you another alternative.
Okay.
That, you, you've gotta see the East Valley that's designed for a uh, a, a water.
So here, here's where I'm at, so you know, with the landscaping on this, and just so everybody else knows, no, I don't wanna design it, no, okay? I think that the landscaping should be. Put in place by the uh. Agua Caliente Indians down here, or, or Morongo Indians with all natural landscaping. They have some very interesting plants, the, the, we give them some space, let them design it. Because you can't get more water wise than what they already know. Um, I think also with the uh, gardeners from U C R. Our, our Pomona, what is that, the master gardens, where they from, Cal Poly, right, Cal Poly. We have different uh. Soil uh, conditions coming through desert hot from way up on the hill all the way down. And if we could give them a little uh, spot of land where they could teach water wise gardening with those different soil conditions. So that's, that's where I met with, with the landscaping on that. Um, and just so you know, I, I think that. We really should just go ahead with what you started now with the plans and until we get this. Treatment plan all built, maybe just hold off on the rest of it until we get our finances in order. Thank you, that's all I have to say, thank you.
I, you, but that is an interesting question because there was one observation that. I've heard from several people is that when we did tour the, the uh, Palm Springs Unified School Facility. We were there, what, about a year ago? And it is much more populated than it was then, it was amazing, some that we, I, I thought. They are never going to outgrow some of these facilities and they were full in some of those, in some of those areas. So what that tells me is that. You're gonna grow faster than you think.
Yeah, and one thing I gotta, I gotta tell you, and it's just my personal opinion, is uh, I like the. Uh, the, what is the Highland? Facility, they're called the Highland Facility?
It's, it's the East Valley Water.
California, right?
Yes, East Valley.
Uh, anyway, I, I did like their facility much better than the, than the school district uh, one, I mean, that, that's a. To me, that, that's just absolutely beautiful out there and I, I hope ours looks more like that than the school district one, so. Just my personal.
It's the design that's for the type of operation that I have, that was so impressive and how much better it, it, it worked.
Did the interior decor, the way everything was set up, uh. So much of the school district one is little, pardon the expression, junky, I mean, it's got. Uh, too much. Clutter in the place and clutter drives crazy, so anyway, uh, anything further on that?
I guess what you.
Amber, you have a question?
I just need to clarify something for the public that may be watching before I get a bunch of phone calls when I get home. Um, the administrative building has not been voted approved for construction by this board. Um the administrative building has not been voted approved for construction by this board. The architecture and the preliminaries to find out what those costs would be are what has been approved by this board. So as far as the concerns of proceeding with the administrative building, am I correct to reassure the public that that is not occurring yet, that this is the preliminary stage? No ground has been broken nor will it until the board approves the bill.
Correct, correct. We have not bid the project yet to give to bring that for award.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anything further? Okay. Moving on to uh the consent agenda, there are two items on the consent agenda, the approval of the minutes and the register of demands. Uh review those over the weekend and if you want to make any corrections, changes or uh additions or anything like that, we can do that on Tuesday. Um item seventeen, register of demands. Register of demands totaling four million seven hundred and six thousand three hundred and fifty one dollars and eighty five cents. Pardon?
No, I have nothing, just take a look at it and feel free to call me.
Okay.
Or my staff, if you have any questions, they're pretty explanatory. We try to be as explicit as we can with what the money is spent for.
Okay, any any if you don't have any questions today, that's okay, because you have the weekend to review it and then uh address your questions on Tuesday, but if you have a question today, yeah. Amber, you sure? All right, and Robert?
No.
Ted?
No.
I don't, okay. Item eighteen, directors reports, anybody wanting to do their reports today? Okay, you're gonna go today? Okay.
Uh I just have one item, December sixteenth, Desert Valley Builders Association luncheon um was a bit different of a presentation. They had Desert Best Friends Closet. Um and there's nothing really significant to report. It's a good presentation, good turnout, just not really building related.
We're gonna have to give you more things to do. You've only got one thing to report on, I mean, that's gotta give you more work, my friend. Ted, you're gonna do yours on uh on Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, and I will too on Tuesday, so general manager's report.
Um not I we, of course, you've had enough financial information for a while, so we're we're gonna give Arturo a a break.
Okay.
Um and but um I do believe we would have a short report from
Marion?
Marion.
Oh, cool.
If you have time for it.
Sure.
Okay, are you okay with that, Marion?
Yes, I am, thank you, General Manager. Um I do have a and good afternoon, President Martin and members of the board. I do have a short PowerPoint to show you. Um and uh we have been very busy this last month. Can you all see my screen? I publicly, thank you, I just wanted to double check that. The coming year is shaping up to be just as busy and fast paced as twenty twenty two. Next week, we'll be finishing up our second set of Water One O One Community Meetings. You remember, may remember that we launched the Water One O One Program last spring, inviting local community members to a series of four presentations that cover topics such as M S W D's water and wastewater systems, our water resources, planning efforts, collaboration with other water agencies, our rates, customer service, and our customer service portal, among other important water related initiatives. Our second set of community participants started the four part series this past fall and we will be finishing up next week. We are at work right now to secure the library for another round of meetings that will start in March. We are also continuing our partnership with Livestream Blood Bank in twenty twenty three and we have scheduled five blood drives. Um efforts uh were very successful last year and we collected more than a hundred pints of life saving blood. Other presentations that we have coming up include our anniversary event, which I'll go into greater detail in a moment. Our master gardening presentation that is taking place on February twenty third, a career day at Cabot's Elementary School and a water update tomorrow that I will be delivering to the Leadership Coachella Valley Group. Uh I wanted to give you a good update on the planning efforts that are taking place on the seventieth anniversary event. Um as I mentioned, we've secured Mission Springs Park on Fri- Friday, February third for a community event that will take place between four and seven P M. The fun filled event will feature children's activities, games, face painting, music, dancing, jump houses, community partner booths, free popcorn and cotton candy, and it will also showcase M S W D's award winning water. The anniversary committee has been very hard at work to plan the event. We've had more than fifteen community partner booths confirmed and we have secured DJ Edward Noriega, the Del Toro Mariachi Band, and we also have seven food truck vendors who have also lined up. Our promotion for the event has been gearing up the past couple of weeks and our outreach activities include um the announcement on our billboard on Palm Drive, a special buck slip that's being inserted into every water statement this month. Committee members have also distributed flyers across town to local businesses, including the libraries, Starbucks, the skate shop, Farmer and the Dell, and other local businesses. We are also promoting the event online through paid and unpaid Facebook and Google Ads. Flyers have been sent um home to Palm Springs Unified Parents using the Peach Jar System, which is their parent email system. We are also sending e-blasts out to our customer email database. We have been targeting Spanish speakers using Spanish radio and an ad in the Ellen Formador. Um that's running both in their print ad and also on their social media state uh pages. We're also being highlight on highlighted on Desert Chat, which is produced by K E S Q. The three minute segment will air on January twenty ninth between six thirty and seven P M P M on K E S Q and between ten thirty and eleven P M on Fox eleven. They will also promote the event on their website as well. Um members of staff have often also been very busy attending several community um groups, uh including the DHS Women's Club, Friends of the Desert Hot Springs Library Rotary, and I'm also planning to attend next week's city council meeting to thank the city for their support and formally announce the event during public comment. We have also written a newsletter story and we've asked many of our community partners to distribute the flyer and the story uh through their distribution channels as well. Examples of this include us being highlighted in the January Mission Lakes Country Club Newsletter and the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce is also planning to highlight us in one of their upcoming e-blasts. In addition to our anniversary outreach this month, we are continuing to promote registration to the customer uh portal. Our uh we are also um are we're promoting our twenty twenty three groundwater protection and conservation calendar and our payment assistance options for customers who are struggling to pay their their bills. You may recall that we included the payment assistance uh payment assistance program in our December newsletter, but we are also um developing a standalone bilingual buck slip that will be included in the February statements. We are also promoting the assistant programs through our paid Facebook and Google Ads, and we are also developing some new materials, including a new form for our website that will allow customers to apply for a payment extension directly from the internet. Also, in an effort to increase transparency, I've drafted a legislative platform document to help guide the district staff and those that work on our behalf. You'll notice the actions described in the document are already in practice here at the district. However, we have not drafted a formal platform in several years. Staff, including our general manager and our assistant general manager and our consultants, including Laura, who you heard from earlier today, are actively involved with several lobbying organizations, including the Aqua Ledge Committee, the California Special District Association's Legislative Committee, and the Crown Water Brown California Groundwater Coalition, just to name a few. Working through these groups, we anticipate that we will will co-author and sign letters of support uh opposing or um uh supporting pending legislating legislation in the coming year. And while this document is very general in nature, it strives to inform and guide our efforts. In line with the district's core mission to provide, protect and preserve, this document is broken into nine basic tenants that include maintaining control of our local resources, protecting our operations and ensuring affordability, protection of groundwater supplies, ensuring workable compliance periods for new water quality standards, supporting efforts to remove customer barriers to conservation programs and helping shape the statewide approach to conservation as a way of life, a practice we hear in the desert already adhere to, and supporting efforts to expand funding opportunities for water infrastructure and removing and improving processes that will streamline loan and grant programs. I hope you all have a chance to read this document, review this document over the weekend and throughout the next few days, and if you have any specific feedback, please relay that to General Manager Wall and more to myself. And lastly, um I also wanted to share uh this month's video. Back at the end of twenty twenty one, we developed a short history video for use on social media and on our website. As part of our seventh seventieth anniversary efforts, we have revamped this figure and I've obtained new photos from the Desert Historical Society, uh Desert Hot Springs Historical Society, excuse me, to better tell our story. Following is a first draft of the video and we have a few more refinements that we'll be making to start before we start to roll it out on our website and our social media platforms in the coming weeks.
For more than seventy years, Mission Springs Water District has upheld its commitment to provide a reliable water supply for the Desert Hot Springs community. Getting fresh drinking water wasn't always as simple as turning on the tap. But water does have a rich history in this area. This part of the desert became famous after early homesteaders discovered the natural hot springs. It wasn't until nineteen forty one that L W Coffee established the village of Desert Hot Springs, initially stretching one square mile between Pond Drive and Pearson Boulevard. As both tourism and the population grew, there was a strong need for water and sewer systems. On February third, nineteen fifty three, voters elected to form Desert Hot Springs County Water District with ninety six percent support. What started in humble beginnings quickly transformed. The first five members of the Board of Directors were tasked with laying the foundation of the Water District, which has since grown to cover one point thirty five square miles. In April of nineteen seventy three, the Allen Allen Horton Water Recognition Facility was completed. The name honors Horton, who served as a board member for twelve years and played a vital role in supporting wastewater treatment throughout the city. In nineteen eighty seven, the district took on the new name today, Mission Springs Water District. The district gradually expanded over the years to include more than one point two five million feet of pipelines, fourteen water wells, and twenty four reservoirs. The local community knew for years that M S W D used that system to deliver great tasting water. The rest of the world learned about that outstanding water in nineteen ninety seven. The district entered the Berkeley Springs International Water Tasting, earning a silver medal. First year completed, Mission Springs Water District has won multiple taste awards over the years, even tapping the title of best tasting water in the world in twenty twenty. Protecting that water supply is essential. So M S W D implemented the groundwater lobbying program in nineteen ninety five. The international recognition program educates the community on the importance of protecting our water supply. Through the years, technology has also evolved from equipment becoming more energy efficient to solar field that offsets the costs to our customers. M S W D always sits ahead. Since the Horton Plant is nearing capacity by treating two million gallons of wastewater daily, M S W D is constructing a new treatment plant. Once completed, the new regional water information facility will treat an additional one point five million gallons of wastewater each day. By maximizing resources, improving wastewater treatment and protecting groundwater supplies, Mission Springs Water District will ensure a great tasting, high quality, sustainable water supply now and for future generations.
Thank you, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Marion.
You know, one thing it hasn't been been brought up regarding the treatment facility and and it was kind of touched on a little bit there is the fact that it's easily expandable, the new one coming in and we can
Yes.
expand it and uh if necessary, because down the road, I'm sure fifteen, twenty years from now, we're gonna need a bigger operation and it's easy to expand that, so.
Well.
It's important to.
That and we are probably going to have to go to advanced treatment and it's
Yeah.
and and it's capable of you know, we we prepared for what we anticipate will happen.
Yeah.
Now, I don't know what we're gonna do with T D S, but we'll work on that.
Okay, all right, all right. Any any questions from the board, to the hammer, Robert?
Uh no questions, just a comment.
Okay.
Uh great job on that video. Um it was really, really good and great use of those pictures, so um congratulations once again, job well done.
Thank you.
Ted?
Is our community event's gonna be on a Friday night at between four and seven? I hear that correctly?
Yes, the event is on Friday uh after after school from four to seven P M. Um that was the actual day that the community voted to um create Mission Spring or the Water District. And so we felt the committee felt it was important to honor that specific day.
I I keep hearing the community, what are you what are you referring to by the community where you?
Back when we were formed, saying that was the date that they did it.
Okay, because it just seems like everybody getting off at work at five o'clock and by the time they get here at six o'clock and they get their family all gathered it over. Anyways, it's done now, thank you.
Evan?
Yeah, I just have a comment. Um I think the legislative platform document is excellent and I hope it's something that we can keep consistent and do year after year. So thank you for your work on that.
And by the way, that uh water tank that was featured a couple of times in the uh in the video, the old one, and it has a big square cut out of the center of it on there. If anybody wants to look at that in person, it's at Cabot's Museum uh just across uh from the uh their little administration building there, so. Yeah, yeah, it's that's where it's uh still there. Anything further, pardon?
Nothing further.
Okay. District Council comments?
Yes, uh we have a closed session item agendized today, but we won't be meeting in closed session today or Tuesday. Um I'd like to uh meet with the two new board members ahead of time to just update them on the history of litigation before we go into a closed session.
Okay, great. Director's comments, Ted?
Nothing, thank you.
Evan? Amber?
I just want to briefly thank the board and the staff for all of their work uh into that they put into the workshop and allowing me the freedom to ask all the questions that I did. And I know that it was a lot and I appreciate everyone's patience with me and everyone's uh forthcoming providing of the information necessary. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We'll be glad to do it anytime you want.
Robert? No.
Really?
Really.
All right.
Not not when the recording stops, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. All right, uh and I have nothing further, so without the meeting is adjourned.